Good evening, everyone. I know it's right now, right at 5:30. We are just gonna give it kind of a two-minute warning, and then we will begin our official session for this evening. Welcome for all of you that are right on time, and thank you very much. Appreciate you being here right at 5:30 to get us going, and we'll begin in just a few minutes. Okay, it's a two-minute warning, and I wanna honor all of you that are on time and appreciate you being with us this evening. Just a couple things that I'll share as we begin this evening. One is that we have all of you tied in, obviously, to a Zoom setting which allows you to interact with us. We ask that you keep yourself muted until you need to speak. You can either speak by making a motion over your cursor which will identify that you're ready to talk, or ask a question, or you can present the question in the chat, and we will pay attention to that as well. We have a variety of folks that are on tonight beyond you that are Little Rock School District staff to assist should you have any questions, in particular, on the second part of the agenda of talking about student support that we provide to exceptional children. So, the, this evening is really about trying to allow us to continue to grow as we move forward on this election, and I know for many of you that's just right around the corner. I've really enjoyed the opportunity so far. I've gotten to meet with probably, I think, five or six of you. I've got another five meetings tomorrow with individual individuals who are running for a board seat, and I very much appreciate that time to get to know each of you a little bit better. This is also precursor for anybody that has this coming up tomorrow, not to be nervous. It's kind of an opportunity for me to get to know you a little better, me to share just a couple things that I'm looking at as priorities that I hope will be considered, and then having you be able to ask any questions that you might have about the district or about myself, about our leadership team, whatever it might be that you bring up. And so it's kind of a good one-on-one time where you get to be, it's your time. And I don't know, many of the candidates take right up to that hour and use it. It ends up being a pretty fast-paced hour, and I am looking forward to meeting the rest of you virtually in a Zoom meeting. And many of you, that will be happening tomorrow. I appreciate the efforts of Dr. Owa to put this all together and his assistant, Mr. Hutchinson. I wanna call both of them out for helping execute this. Also appreciate Ms. Smith, who is behind the scenes. And the reality is that the public can also watch this meeting if they so choose, and we did publicize it so that anybody can look at what's going on with the background work to prepare everybody for running and being on a school board. So, with that, I'm going to introduce Dr. Owa, who will kind of set the next phase for our agenda, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Owa right now.
Thank you, Superintendent Porter. Good afternoon. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We have some guests with us, some sitting board members from around the state who will participate in the panel this evening to just provide their perspective from sitting on a school board. And then we have our district leaders, school leaders, who will present a short presentation on student support systems and programs that we have throughout the district to give you a brief overview and an idea of the type of supports that we provide our young people. Because our panelists are joining us at this time, we're going to go ahead and, Mr. Porter, if you do not mind, we're going to go ahead and jump to the presentation of the student supports, and then come back with the panel if that is okay with you.
That is fine, and I know the staff will appreciate the fact that they can move on with their evening, so that may be a thoughtful way to handle it. Thank you.
Thank you. The Student Services Division is headed by Dr. Freddie Fields. He's the senior director of the division. The division works collaboratively with students, families, staff members, and the community to reduce barriers with, which prevent students from achieving success in schools. You'll see several of his directors present tonight on just briefly what their departments and offices support, how they support our young people and families. We provide supports that are responsive to the needs of our diverse student body while facilitating healthy, safe, and orderly schools. This is his student services organizational chart. As you can see, he oversees the student services, care, counseling, dropout prevention, Hamilton, Learning Academy, health services, mental health services, special programming, student hearings, and the juvenile detention services. Of course, Student Registration Office, most of you are familiar with that. That oversees the student enrollment from kindergarten through 12th grade. That office works with parents throughout the process of registration or school changing during the school year by informing them of the available options of their attended zone schools, our magnet programs, the Public School Choice Act procedures, and other types of transfers. The school resource, I mean, Registration Office manages student assignments to schools, facilitating the efficient use of districts' resources.
Can I jump in on that one just real quick? As school board members, Little Rock is unique. If you go back on slide. Well, thank you, and I know Dr. Fields does a great job of trying to manage this, this office because we do have magnet programs throughout our district, and most of you are familiar with that because you're longtime residents, but that does make us unique. It also makes it very unique in terms of when parents have to apply for those positions and some of the structures behind it. There is policy that relates to this that helps govern how Dr. Fields responds to parents that are seeking these options, but it is one that brings up a lot of, a lot of questions to board members. And so I just kind of wanted to call this one specifically out that there's a lot more depth to this one, and what we want from board members is you run into questions or whether it's during the campaign or once you're elected is to be able to reach out to us so that we can help educate you and help you be able to make good decisions as we move forward on our big priorities.
The district also provides the CARE program, which is a nonprofit self-supporting program of affordable childcare before school and after school. You can see that we start, the before-school care starts at 7 o'clock AM until school begins, and then it starts after school at 5:30 PM as well as during, during all non-school days that teachers are working. DHS License Program Office created and recreational activities for students who participate in the program. Mrs. Grayson, our Director of Counseling is on. She'll present the Counseling Department.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Counseling is a professional. School counselors participate as members of the educational team and use skills of leadership, advocacy, collaboration to promote systematic change in our schools. School counselors are certified licensed with a minimum of a master's degree in school counseling. They are uniquely qualified to address all students' academic, career, and social-emotional development. Little Rock School District currently has 59 counselors and a coordinator of counseling. Twenty-six of those counselors are elementary, 14 middle school, and 19 are high school. Currently, our counselors are helping our students get reacclimated to school, checking to see if students need additional support, whether that be in the classroom or outside the classroom, and then making those referrals where necessary, and working on the social and emotional learning of our students.
We also provide support in our safe and drug-free areas with dropout prevention and truancy compliance. This department encompasses several important areas of support for our students in providing prevention, reduction, and intervention initiatives to improve attendance district-wide. They oversee attendance, truancy, and comply with ADE regulations regarding attendance and truancy court notifications. You will note that the department supervises 14 school-based dropout prevention coordinators, and they support schools in maintaining safe, drug-free environments for all of our students. They also participate in adult education services as well as the general, the GED testing program. This district also provides an alternative learning environment. It encompasses the programs for secondary students in grades six through eight based at the Hamilton Learning Academy, and then grades nine through 12 at the high school ALE program Metro Campus. The ALE Alternative Learning Environment Program for grades K-5 is at Washington Elementary School. The ALE setting provides an environment that eliminates barriers to learning for students whose academic and social-emotional progress is negatively affected by students' personal characteristics or situation. So, the program is designed to support our students who may need a smaller setting, a different setting, instructional setting, and definitely not to be punitive. In our Health Services Department, of course, we have that department providing our support to students by providing education as well as the health services that are necessary to promote our students' optimum level of wellness, school attendance, and academic success. The services consist of the health room assessments, interventions, where each nurse cares, cares for 20 to 60 students per day. And I'll pause and note that we also have health-based, school-based clinics within our school system, within our district as well. And so we'll share information about those health-based clinics with you in future training opportunities. They manage chronic diseases such as asthma, diabetes, seizure disorders, and life-threatening allergies. They also oversee the required vision, hearing, height, and weight screenings, and monitor the Arkansas Department of Health vaccine requirements. Our Mental Health Services Department, Ms. Grayson, are you taking that one, or is Ms. Williams?
I can take that one. The Mental Health Services Department provides an oversight for non-contracted mental, uh, mental and behavior, your health agencies to ensure that the student and families in the district receive quality mental health services. The agencies provide individual, group, and family therapy, case management, and medication management. These services also include home visits and resource packets for families. The department works with the truancy department and school counselors to support students who are struggling with attendance and other issues. Mental health and social-emotional learning is needed now more than ever due to the relentless presence of COVID-19, and some specific services have been provided by mental health and counseling. Mental health services, virtually, there's telehealth and on-site for students and families by contracted agencies. S E L training and support for administrators, teachers, and school staff. We also provided some training for parents earlier before school started. Resources for parents and school staff on the district website involving social-emotional learning, S E L course and Schoology for educators with focus on yoga, meditation, and self-care.
Thank you, Ms. Grayson. In the Special Programs, Special Programs Department oversees the implementation of the Individuals with Disabilities Education. We call IDEA for the district's 3,100 students with disabilities. Under IDEA, students with disabilities receive a free, appropriate public education designed to meet their unique needs and prepare them for further education after their 12th grade year with us, employment, and independent living. The department also supports compliance with Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act regarding protecting the rights of students with disabilities by providing appropriate accommodations. And then the Student Services Division also houses the Juvenile Detention Program, which the educational component and services to Plaske County Juvenile Detention Center and the Plaske County Detention Center. Students from ages 10 through 18 are provided a public education while in those facilities, and we oversee and support our students who participate or who are involved in, in that program. In addition to that, we provide academic supports as well. In our English for Speakers of Other Languages, ESOL Department, we provide two instructional specialists as well as two instructional facilitators. That team provides site-based instructional support for all schools with English learners. Also provides support, support to our educators through professional learning communities, modeling, small group intervention, and technical assistance. The department assists 10 schools with additional funding to cover the Lexia program that enhances the reading skill set or capacity for our young people. In addition to that, the ESOL Department provides supplementary supports through instructional modifications and testing accommodations. So, they partner with our assessment office to ensure that our English learners, students are provided the very best assessment based on their current needs. They also participate in progress monitoring through the site-based LPAC committees. They assist with new student identification while, and even during these times during the virtual learning option as well. And so they provide that to our virtual learners at a remote assessment location, and others will be assessed in person at their respective campuses. We also provide our dyslexia supports. We have two dyslexia specialists in our district. Yes, sir.
I'm gonna interrupt you and just go back on the ESOL slide, and I know I see Dr. Henry in there as well. Could one of you just provide the incoming board members a kind of a percentage of what type of population we're dealing with here, just so they have a rough idea of how many students are impacted in this area? And we probably should have done the same thing with SPED if you don't wanna.
Dr. Henry?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, everyone. We presently have close to 3,000 English learners between kindergarten and 12th grade, and those students are distributed on every campus across the district. The majority, and that represents, on average, roughly 13% of the district's population. And those students represented a varsity of languages. The majority of those students are from a Spanish-speaking language background, and the rest of them are made up of anywhere up to another 30 or 40 different languages.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you sharing that, and one of the things about this, also the students with IEPs, and then our students with ESOL, is that these all can be broke out by categories. So, if you go back to the tool called My School, you can actually disaggregate by individual schools to see how we're doing or by district, and you can do comparison data. So, I just wanna use that as kind of a plug that there is an accountability level, and we're actually very proud of the accountability within this particular group because we, our staff does a great job under Dr. Henry's leadership. And could we go back a little bit? And I don't know whether Dr. Fields or you, Dr. Owa would handle the question on the percentages with students that have IEPs?
Dr. Fields?
Yes, sir.
Do, uh, do you have the percentages for the number of students who are serviced via IEPs?
Little Rock School District increased to 3,100 students this year. We had roughly 2,000, probably 2,300 last year, and we've increased to 3,100.
In addition to what I stated earlier about dyslexia, our specialists help oversee the screening, response to intervention, and then placement for our students who need support in the area of dyslexia. They provide instructional support for our Tier Two Reading Intervention Programs, Just Words, and our Tier Three Dyslexia Intervention Program, Wilson Reading System. In addition to that, the additional support is provided through monthly support sessions, professional learning communities, modeling, school visits, team meetings, and ongoing professional development provided to our educators. Of course, we have a screening process, the initial screening process for all K-2 students is provided there. And I'll note to all of you that this PowerPoint will be shared with all of you first thing tomorrow morning, and so you'll receive that, so you're able to receive the links as well. The Level One and/or Level Two screening for K-2 students who show need on the initial screener or grades three through 12th grade students experiencing difficulty in word, word-level reading and spelling as noted by classroom teachers are screened as well. Of course, I mentioned that we utilize the Wilson Multi-Tiered System of Support foundations, Tier One and Tier Two for K-3. Tier Two, we utilize Just Words for grades four through 12. And then for Tier Three grades, for students who are in grades, second through 12th grade, we use Wilson Reading System. And you'll see that currently our numbers, we have 177 teachers in grades four through 12 who've been trained since 2019 with Just Words. Where 2,400 students in grades five through 12 were screened with that program in early 2020. And then from that, we have identified a little over 1,000 students who can benefit from Tier Two instruction, and they have been recommended for the Just Words course. And then in addition to that, 262 students would benefit from Tier Three Dyslexia Intervention and were recommended for additional screening and placement. And you'll see for Tier Three, 164 of our teachers, K-12, have been trained since 2019, and so that they're able to serve the over 1,700 students who currently needs the dyslexia intervention. And we have some numbers for you on here. You will see as compared to February 2019 to September 2020, an elementary went, went from serving 898 students to 993, and secondary, 79 students to 729, for a total of 977 students in February 2019 to 1,722, which is great because we know when our students receive this type of dyslexia interventions, that impacts all areas, all content areas, more specifically, reading, English classes, their literacy skills. And so this is great news that we're able to identify more students and provide them the supports that they need.
Superintendent Porter, can I jump in on this one again? And Ms. Carpenter, let's give a, I know you're on here as well, and she's our dyslexic specialist. Can you go back to when you first were hired in your role and just provide a little bit different context of our growth? Because I think that gives even a better picture of some of the good work that you've done.
Yeah, sure. I started in, I guess it was November or December 2018, and then we had an audit in January 2019. So, it was good because I got to have a fresh slate for everywhere that we needed to go. And one of the biggest things that they found is that we were not identifying kids in secondary. And so as you can see from our numbers, we screened about 2,400 kids in January. It was a lot of work, and then the pandemic hit, but we have found a lot of kids that needed that help that weren't identified. And so now we have, I think we've gone up like 10 times the amount that we had in February. So, I am really proud of our teachers and our staff just persevering through new programs and through the pandemic and making it work. So, I think we're doing a really good job. I think we have, we have the most students out of any district in Arkansas, for sure. We are way higher.
Yeah, and let me jump in now, Ms. Carpenter, and one of the reasons we, we, we put this segment of the presentation together for you all is that as you run, a lot of times you'll run into individuals that are very passionate about supporting their child, especially if they have some sort of learning challenge. That could be dyslexia. It could be a student with an IP. It could be a student that's trying to learn a second language. And we wanted, this obviously doesn't cover all the nuts and bolts and the depth that you need, but we wanted at least provided a baseline information of what we're doing. And with dyslexia in particular, tied to the science of reading, the district has made significant strides on really kind of going old-school and going back to phonemic awareness, being able to teach students how to sound out their words and develop a skill set that will make them readers for life. Of course, students that may need extra support that have dyslexia, that's fallen into Ms. Carpenter's lap, and she has really done a good job. So, it's kind of a combination of the science of reading along with what we're doing with dyslexia. And really, again, I wanna frame this in the fact that you're gonna, we could have, if you'd have ran two years ago, you would have had a lot of folks talking to you about dyslexia in particular to say, "What's your thoughts? You gotta do something." Now, we have folks that are helping us solve the problem, and the whole spirit and attitude about our support towards dyslexic learners has really changed. And I wanna give Ms. Carpenter credit, also Hope Worsham, who's our executive director of curriculum instruction on tonight, of the work that they've done. And I appreciate letting me butt in, Dr. Owa. I know I say I'm just gonna sit here and then I can't help myself.
Oh, it's fine, Superintendent Porter. Continue to do it. I will also add that our executive director, Hope Worsham, has really been working great with our curriculum instruction team. has really been working great with our curriculum instruction team to really look at our core instruction and to see how we can better support our students who may have needs in the dyslexia area, but just district-wide on how we can better structure our instructional practices, provide capacity building for our educators and different content areas so that we can continue to meet the needs of our students. And so that team, our curriculum instruction team, doing an excellent job in just doing self-reflection and how we can continue to improve our academics in the district. Our academic support. In addition to those support areas, we also provide the Gifted and Talented support programs. We provide these, this program to approximately three thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven identified students in grades four through twelve. During the K-two years, our students receive whole group enrichment. And then grades four and five, they participate in pull-out and resource support for Gifted and Talented. And grades six through eight, they participate in Gifted and Talented seminar courses as well as Gifted and Talented content courses in mathematics, English, social studies, and science at those two middle schools, Pulaski Heights and Dunbar. Six through eight, our students are also able to participate in pre-advanced placement courses as well as my students in grades nine through twelve have the opportunity to participate in the pre-AP as well as AP courses and the effective need support. These support services are provided by twenty-nine elementary specialists and twenty-seven middle high school facilitators and teachers. And so we'll continue to provide those supports throughout the district and then provide guidance to our instructors as they provide the instruction to our Gifted and Talented students. And as you can see that we have over two thousand, roughly two thousand four hundred and twenty, twenty students currently enrolled in pre-AP, pre-advanced placement courses. We have seven hundred and fifty-nine students in advanced placement courses. And then fourteen students currently enrolled in concurrent credit. And we'll continue to work to increase that number so that our students would not only receive high school credit, but also college credit. And you can see that all of the pre-advanced placement, advanced placement, and concurrent credit courses are offered in grades six through twelve for all students. And we have AP coordinators at each high school to help facilitate that. And we continually to ensure that our staff are fully trained and provided the necessary resources to lead that instruction.
Dr. Oa, just a point of clarification, and Ms. Shinova can correct me if I'm wrong, but the fourteen concurrent, I know that might be like, wow, that seems significantly lower than I would have expected. Those are just for our GT students. That does not count the students that are a part of concurrent-type programs that can just happen in the traditional school setting or in our career tech programs. Am I correct on that, Ms. Shinova?
Actually, that number is reflective of the data that I pulled yesterday from our report, reporting system. However, I do feel that we're gonna have a huge increase, increase in those numbers because I know conversations are ongoing regarding that concurrent enrollment process as students are finalizing those agreements with the colleges in which their schools have, have, you know, partnered with to offer the concurrent coursework. So I know that's as of yesterday, but then I also know there are still conversations surrounding that enrollment process for them concurrently. So I expect that number to increase. Last year, it was around sixty or more.
Thank you. Dr. McKissick, would you like to share the supports that we're able to provide through federal programs?
Good afternoon, everyone. I would. Currently, the Little Rock School District participates in multiple federal programs. Our department manages Title One, Title Two, Title Four, McKinney-Vento, Ten-O-three, and Twenty-First Century. And when we look at the funding just in this year, we have over fifteen million dollars that we are disseminating through this office. So in that, we always think of our programming as what provides opportunity as well as support. So with Title One, the focus is the achievement of the disadvantage. So that really points in the area of support. But then too, we provide the multiple opportunities for students to participate. So our free reduced lunch rate or our poverty rate in Little Rock School District is about sixty-eight percent, very close to seventy percent. And we have, we, we need to provide much support as it relates to making sure that our children have every advantage they can to meet the achievement requirements that other children are expected to meet, or that all children are expected to meet. So I just wanted to point out what's happening, just to focus on just a few. We have any number of programs. You're welcome to touch base with me in any, at any point in time to talk about what may be happening in the Federal Programs Department. But right now, we're in the process of launching a virtual homework helpline. And with that, we're hoping, we're, we will provide support to all of our families. Anyone who has a need, and we are finding people from the community who have asked to provide support. We have teachers and administrators who are working, who want to be a part of this virtual opportunity. So we're hoping to roll that out in the very near future, maybe as early as Monday of next week. This was Dr. Oa's idea, and he just said, okay, can, can Title, can Title One do this? And the answer was yes, because it's a part of our charge is to be able to carry out the grant when we do, when we have programming such as this. I think there may be another slide that talks about our homeless support. That's through McKinney-Vento or the McKinney-Vento Grant. With that, we have the, the pleasure of serving our students who are in shelters, supporting those families that are in shelters. We have, we work very closely with Student Support Services, Dr. Field's office, because between the two departments, we have to determine have they met the criteria? And once they do, what are the support structures that we have to have in place in order to make sure that those children have every chance, that all barriers are reduced to make sure that they have access to what other students have? So we have any number of programs. And we will share all of them with you, and I hope that there's another opportunity that we can talk more about federal programming because it is such a plus in a district our size. There are things that we simply could not do if we did not have those programs in place. Thank you, Dr. Oa.
Thank you, Dr. McKissick. And before.
Can I jump in real quick again, Dr. Oa?
Yes, sir.
One other thing, Dr. McKissick, that I know is a point of pride for you with parental support, not only now developing this homework hotline, but can you also just quickly share about the Parent Academy approach that you've taken on? And I can't believe that didn't come up in this PowerPoint, so please, please share it real fast.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Poore. I really appreciate that. Yes. For the last, this will be our fourth year, if we can manage it somehow virtually. But we have had parenting partners. We've joined together with Family Leadership out of California. They provide the curriculum. You know, we have great parent programs, but we did not have a curriculum in place for parents. And I know that there isn't a rulebook for it, but we were hoping that we could find something that all parents could participate in, agree upon, and actually try. So we have had parents from every corner of the Little Rock School District. Every economic bracket, we've had them to take part in this program. And, and every year, we graduate a class. And our graduation classes have just taken on a life of their own because we have parents or grandparents who are graduating in cap and gown for the first time. And it is just, they are thrilled to become new ambassadors for the Little Rock School District. We have taken some of those parents who graduated from the program, and they have become our trainer of trainers for other parents. They actually go out and they work in schools with those parent groups to teach or share that curriculum from parenting partners. It is one of the jewels, I think, in our department. And thank you again for reminding me of that.
Thank you, Dr. McKissick.
You're welcome. I'm done.
Before we transition to our panel, I just wanted to check to see if any of our board candidates have any questions for our district leaders before they depart us this evening? I don't see any questions, so we're transitioning to our panel. For the school governance panel, we have some experienced school board members with us. We have Dr. Julia Gardner. She's a family physician. She also works as the Program Director of Family Medicine Residency Program. She's a member of the Howland School Board. And then she's also a member of the Arkansas School Board Association as a board member as well. She has, she was the daughter of retired educators. And she also served in the K-twelve Salem Public School System, where she attended the Salem Public School System. We also have Mr. Ron McDaniel. He was born and raised in Croset. He now resides in Jacksonville, and he joined the United States Air Force in nineteen seventy-two, but moved back to Jacksonville and finished his military career in twenty twelve. He has three children, and all of his adult children graduated from the Pulaski County Special School District Schools. And then he retired from the military as a colonel after serving in the position of commander for the Arkansas Air National Guard of Little Rock Air Force Base. He has served as a school board member since the inception of Jacksonville North Pulaski School District. And then Tina Ward is our third panelist. I'm not sure if she's joined us yet, but we'll move forward. But Mrs. Ward serves on the school board for Pulaski County Special School District. She's employed by the University of Arkansas for Medical Sciences at UAMES since two thousand and three. And she has children who actually attended Pulaski County Special School District. And so she wanted to give back by joining that school board. So we're pleased and honored to have these sitting school board members with us, and we're going to stop sharing our screens so that you can see them as they present. And then we'll get started with our questions. So with our panelists, Dr. Gardner, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Ward, as you answer this question, feel free to share any additional information with this group as well. But the first question is, what motivated you to become a board member?
Who's going first?
Since you talked to Mr. McDaniel, you can go ahead, and then we'll go to Dr. Gardner.
Well, the, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Well, the fact that I live in Jacksonville, and Jacksonville's done so much for me as a, as a member of the community. I thought I'd give a little bit back. My main reason was the academic, if you will, perception of the students in our district. And I want to improve on that, our academic achievement. The other thing that prompted me to become a member was the fact that we're, we're still under court, court oversight, federal court oversight, and I'd like to work with the other board members and, and the district employees to get unitary status for us in the near future. So those are the primary reasons that, that I'm a board member and have been for, since the inception of the, the district.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Dr. Gardner, what motivated you to become a school board member? And if you're talking, just to remind you that you're on mute, so you have to unmute your phone, I mean, your device.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. We can.
There we go. I'm the child of educators, and when I had a child myself, my parents told me it was my responsibility as a parent with a child in the school to go to the board meetings, volunteer at the school, and that attending the board meetings, I was to support the board, support the administration as a parent, and learn as much as I could about what was going on at the school. I did that for probably close to five or six years. I attended almost all the school, or at least half the school board meetings. And when a position came open, I was asked to join the board and was appointed from a position that was left vacant and then ran. So feeling the need to support the system, if I had a child in it, I felt like that was a responsibility.
Thank you, Dr. Gardner. So the next question is, what do you all, what do the two of you see the board's role and responsibilities? As a board member, what are your roles and responsibilities? And Dr. Gardner, if you don't mind going first now, and then we'll circle back to Mr. McDaniel.
Well, the reading, you can read all the guidelines, the hiring and the firing of the superintendent and doing those. But I felt like as a board member, the most important thing that I did was every issue that came up needed to be asked, will this benefit the kids? And that, that was the question. As a school board member, I was there to ask every time an issue came up or every time a new program came up, is this gonna benefit the kids? If the answer was no, then it was move on to the next. If the answer was yes, then as a board member, what was my role or my responsibility in helping the leaders of the district make that happen for the kids? And I'll stop there.
Thank you, Dr. Gardner. Mr. McDaniel, what do you believe the board's roles and responsibilities are?
As board members, we are to evaluate the performance of the superintendent of our district. We are to not be responsible for the day-to-day operations of the district. That is the superintendent's responsibility. We evaluate him. And we provide him with support in completing his duties as requested. We don't micromanage the superintendent. He has the experience, and then we hired him. So we, we get out of his way and let him do the things he needs to do. Now, we have to respond to our parents in regard to issues that they find important. So we have to go to the superintendent, most of the time individually, and, and ask for clarification on the issues that, that concern a particular parent. And that's, that's, I'll close with that.
Thank you, thank you. And as we move from there of what, what both of you shared, who do you, in, in your perspective as sitting board members, who should set the rules governing board procedures, methods, and behavior? Who should enforce them? So, so who should set the rules governing board procedures, methods, and behavior? And then who should enforce them? Mr. McDaniel?
Well, we, we, the board members, set the procedures for our board based upon the Arkansas Superintendent, excuse me, School Board Association provides us with guidance. But we make sure that, as, as stated previously, that when we do some, some type of policy, we take into consideration the, the student, the, the, the young people, and make sure that we're not doing anything that will harm their ability to be educated. So that's my thoughts on that.
Thank you. Mr. Dr. Gardner, would you like to add anything to that?
He's the same way we function of the board says the procedure. The Arkansas School Board Association has an entire list of things that we are responsible for and how we proceed and the procedures that we do. Anytime anyone acts on any board, I think behavior is a thing that you should monitor yourself for. Professional behavior is expected. You expect it of your school leaders and you expect it of the, of the kids. So it starts with the board. you expect it of the kids. So it starts with the board. So monitoring the board itself and being open to receiving feedback on what's going on, I think is going to be really important for that. And then being accountable. The School Board Association has accountability for some of the actions.
Thank you both. And moving towards more so the governing, how can a board, how can a board member know if its goals? Yes, sir.
I want to, in particular, Mr. McDaniel, who I don't believe I've met before, so I apologize for putting you on the spot, but your situation of having a brand-new board come into Jacksonville where there was none, in some ways resembles the Little Rock situation because we've been absent of an elected board for more than five years. So as you all undertook that, Mr. McDaniel, was there something that you felt was really important when you start to talk about board governance and kind of behavior and rules and getting along that you all established as you first came together?
Superintendent, poor, we, we had our, what do you call them, pains of learning? The thing that helped us out is that we developed a respect for each other and each other's opinions as board members. We all know that even though there's a president of a board, they don't have the sole responsibility of making decisions. It's the members of the board vote on issues. So we had to learn how to be professional with each other and make sure that we got the full information on the issues that are presented to us so that we could come to an agreement on the way to go forward. That answer pretty much, I could, you know, I could go into detail. We had a lot of challenges as far as getting taxes passed, property tax passed to build our new schools that we're building. So we had a lot of challenges that we had to present ourselves with, and some areas of the community were not as cooperative as we would have wanted them to. So we had to overcome those barriers. But I hate to be redundant, but it's for the kids. If whatever we do is for the benefit of the kids and our community, then we always fell on the side of that's what we're going to do, the positive things for the kids. That cover it? Dr. Por, do I need to elaborate more?
No, thank you. And I think that some of the next questions, we'll let you go into a little more detail. So thank you.
The next question is, how can a board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies carried out? How do you know when the goals are being accomplished and the policies that the board makes are being carried out? Dr. Gardner?
A big part of it is keeping up with reports. The leaders are providing a lot of reports, and you should expect that they would. But if you're sent those, it's reading it, keeping up with it, paying attention, and understanding when the goals should be met and when that's available. Because some of the things that you start, you won't see for several years, but some of the things you start, you'll see immediate. But it's being involved, paying attention, and showing up at the right places.
Mr. McDaniel?
Actually, that's correct. We just have to be involved, not so much in, again, the day-to-day operation, but we have to keep our ears open in the community. We need to get feedback from the parents and the students about what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong. And you have to make adjustments based upon what was brought to you as far as comments. And we try to do that in a way that is respectful and professional and ensure that the parents and the students feel like they're appreciated for what they're telling us about the different issues that are presented to them.
Thank you. Next question. With one or two meetings a month, all school board members or school boards are limited in what they can do. How does this, or how should the board decide what's most important to address or discuss?
I guess I'll go first. Well, you prioritize, actually, your president is the one that kind of leads the way in relation to prioritizing what's important in respect to what you need to deal with. We have been doing a lot of dealing with, what's this thing called, coronavirus or something like that? But that, and making sure that the young people in that respect, and which everybody's dealing with it, but they're as safe as possible. We have to, we've got a lot of going on now with construction, so we have to be sure that that's going on. And we have to look at the areas, as I said earlier, that we are trying to get the unitary status in those areas that have to be monitored. We have to make sure that we're going in the right direction on those and ask questions about achievement, potential for improvement, and the fact that discipline is an issue in regards to the court case, ongoing court case that we're on. So we have to look, make sure those areas are prioritized as far as not letting them kind of go to the wayside, even though we're in this particular situation we're in now.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. And Dr. Gardner, I have a different question for you. How would you handle, how have you handled requests from individuals, special interest groups? How do you handle those requests as a board member that you may receive within the community?
Listen, make very little comment, no decisions, and keep my opinions to myself while listening to them. Everybody needs to be heard. Everybody's issues need to be heard, and that's passed then directly usually to the superintendent. And I usually encourage, I'm in a smaller district, but I usually encourage parents or people that have special interests, if they have information, I encourage them to send it directly to the superintendent so that he's aware of what's going on or the needs. But it's not my job as the school board member to make any decisions or side in. It is my job to listen and then evaluate as a board to make decisions as the board, as the superintendent has gathered information. And our meetings are set with the president and the superintendent, and the superintendent then provides all the background and needed information for any issue that comes up. And that's, that's the most important piece, is you've got to hear all sides of every issue. And there may be two, but there may be 10 sides to every issue, and the board's got to hear them all.
Thank you, Dr. Gardner. And we have just a couple more questions, and so don't want to hold you much longer. But Mr. McDaniel, what qualities or behaviors should board members exhibit? From your perspective, from your experience, what qualities and behaviors should board members exhibit?
Obviously, mutual respect for each other and each other's opinions about different issues. They have to understand that everybody's not going to agree completely on an issue, but to ask questions and get feedback. And at the end of the day, if everybody's not agreeing on it, if there's a vote that's held and it passes or it fails, they understand that people have different opinions on how things would be done and don't take it personally.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. And Dr. Gardner, what, from your perspective and experience, what do you believe the role of the superintendent is? And if you don't mind, describe the superintendent's role?
Not one I would think I could manage. The superintendent's role is to assess all issues involving the school. Dr. Por has noted that as you went through everything. He is up on everything that you presented and able to comment on it. It's his role to support the leaders. It's also to support the faculty and the staff and oversee, provide background to the board, and give the board the information they need to make decisions. But his number-one priority is the first kid that steps off of the bus that day.
Thank you, Dr. Gardner. And for both of you, the last question, how can you contribute? How can a school board member contribute to a successful board meeting? And we'll start with Mr. McDaniel.
You can not overly, could say dramatize an issue. I mean, you need to address an issue, but don't spend 15 minutes talking about an issue that you feel is important, but that everybody else might not feel as important. So just keep it short. And the thing about a superintendent is you can have one-on-ones with superintendents, board members can. You can't go more than two at a time, but you can have one-on-ones, and you can try to get the information that you need before the meeting and have a good idea so that you can keep the meeting short if there's an issue that's kind of controversial.
Thank you. And Dr. Gardner, how can you contribute to a successful board meeting?
A big portion is do your background homework. Make sure you understand the issues. And I agree that meeting with the superintendent one-on-one, you should never blindside your superintendent in a board meeting or blindside your other board members. And if the homework is done and you understand the issues, then you can have discussion or provide information. But there really shouldn't be any dissension in a board meeting among the members because nobody knew what was going to happen or to go through with the meeting. But the mutual respect and listening to the board members, because as many board members as you have, you will have that many opinions on different issues, and it's just important to listen.
Thank you, Dr. Gardner. Mr. McDaniel, very sound guidance and experience, perspectives from your experience. Before we conclude, any last remarks or any last commentary that you would like to share just from your experience from being a school board member? Mr. McDaniel?
Again, and it may be that some of our candidates might want to ask questions, and I want to set the stage with just a question to both of you. What surprised you when you were elected that you just didn't expect when you came into the role of a board member? Something that you weren't prepared for or something that was maybe a big challenge to overcome, either as an individual or as a, with a team that's making up of the board?
I think I can answer that. I think that when I got on the board, I thought, and I had attended a lot of board meetings and listened, but my anticipation was you could just make decisions and it be done. And that's not always the case. There are rules to follow. There are guidelines. You can decide that an employee shouldn't be at the school. And there are lots of rules and guidelines that have to be followed before that can be changed. And I think there's just more to it than you think of when you're sitting on the outside, well, just why don't they do this? Why don't they do that? And I think that's a big, a big thing that was an eye-opener for me, is that having, running up my own private business and making my own decisions, that you can't just do that immediately.
Yeah, I'll have to agree with Dr. Gardner on that. Am I on?
Yes, sir. We agree.
Okay. I can attest to that also. You just, when I was in the military and I was a commander, I pretty much made decisions. I had a little bit of input, but that's not the way the board works. So you have to get a consensus on things. The other thing is the number of meetings that we've had over the years, and Dr. Orr will attest to that when he was with us, especially gotten more and more meetings now with construction going on. It's just a lot of things going on that I didn't anticipate, but it's all for the good of the students. And again, that's what we're all about.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for our two panelists?
Someone did, and I don't know how to do this, but someone did ask if I was from Crossit, Arkansas. I am from Crossit, Arkansas, graduated in 1970. So I just celebrated my 50th anniversary, oh, yeah, 50th year of since graduation. So to whoever sent me that, I can't electronically answer you.
I have a question quickly. I just wanted to ask the board members, how do you balance representing the people in your zone and also doing what's in the best interest of the entire district? If you ever have any concerns about that, just wondered what your thoughts were.
If I can go, I am an at-large board member, so I represent everyone. So I'm kind of not in that situation where I have to go in a zone. And we deliberately set it up to where we have two at-large, and we have seven board members, two at-large and five zones within our district. And that's another thing. It really helps out when you're dealing with issues, and some people get zoned, if you know what I mean. They think about just their little area rather than the big picture. So that's, we thought it was important to do an at-large, two at-larges and then five-zone board member.
We have a similar setup. I'm in a zone, and fortunately, we've not had issues that one zone or the other had issues that didn't affect everybody. So that's, that's never been an issue that we have dealt with, that one zone had needs that would affect the others in a negative fashion.
And if I could, I'd like to add into the comments from the question Ms. Nolan presented that one of the things that I think all of you as board members even understand it better now than ever because you're running right now, and you've got races, and you have, you know, an area that you know you're trying to pull votes from, and you have schools inside of those. And so, you know, you kind of have that attachment part. But, you know, the reality is, if we're going to function well as a school board, we have to kind of think beyond that into this bigger group to say, here is Little Rock School District, and here are our biggest priorities that we want for our children. And then where things can get, I think where you can start to dive into certain aspects of certain parts of the city is there may need to be greater resources provided to a certain part. But I'm telling you that it's not easy because you're, no, you're going to have to run again at some point. But effective boards do look at the biggest picture of the district. And you sometimes even see this in city and national government where everybody gets so hunkered down into one little thing. But when, I think good decision-making gets elevated when we think about it in a larger context. And it's not easy, as probably both Mr. McDaniel and Ms. Gardner can say, because even, you know, this Congress committee, which is a little bit smaller, guaranteed, she goes into a grocery store, there's somebody going to be in her ear about a very specific recommendation on a hot topic.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any more questions for our panelists? Are there any more questions for our panelists? Well, definitely, again, oh, did I hear someone? Definitely, again, thank you, Dr. Gardner, Mr. McDaniel, for joining us tonight. I know that you all are busy and we appreciate your guidance and your willingness to provide us your perspective as school board members. So thank you for joining us tonight. Superintendent Porter, do you have some closing remarks? I am going to bring up this live screen about our next board candidate training information session, but do you have closing remarks?
I do. And I also want to thank Mr. McDaniel and Dr. Gardner for joining us this evening. Also want to thank each of you for your investment of time tonight, but also the willingness to run and stick your neck out because that in itself of this day and age is worthy of praise. So thank you for your willingness to jump forward. We are going to do one more kind of work session. And we have two big topics. One is budget-oriented and the other one is board NGL. Board NGL is really a critical component of our future direction of our academy approach and trying to prepare kids for being what they do when they leave us as 12th graders, whether it's going into post-secondary or into a workforce environment, doing education at a later stage. This is the big topic and we want to have you all prepared to just understand where we're headed on there. But then the budgets, it's going to be interesting because we actually approve the budget you all will operate under this coming month here in September. So in reality, when we talk about this in October, we're going to be sharing with you, here is the approved budget for this academic year 2020-21. And you'll get to understand the revenues and the expenditures. And then you're going to be given by our chief financial officer, a mechanism where you'll start to understand the way to track the budget items here as the ad finishes its work or you begin your work in December. So we think that'll be of value. We also want to try to make sure you're aware of the federal and state type budgets coming in, that initially many of those support those special populations that we talked about today. So that will be our last significant training prior to your election. And we will have the Chamber of Commerce, James Reddish, Kristi Barker, Board NGL, Kelsey Bailey helping on the operating budgets, and then federal and state, Dr. McKissick and Dr. Owa helping us out on those. And we hope these have been valuable and we hope it's not a waste of your time. We also, I again appreciate the willingness that all of you have had to do the one-on-one with me. As you heard from Mr. McDaniel and Dr. Gardner, that is a key aspect that happens with members and their superintendents, of being able to talk on a regular basis. So I'm looking forward to that opportunity to work with each of you as individuals here in the very near future. But thank you is the final comment for this evening. And then thank you for your investment of time. And I'll, Dr. Owa, do you want the last comment?
Oh, no, sir. You're the superintendent, so I appreciate you closing us out. I'll just say good night to everyone and thank you for joining us.
Thank you again. Have a good rest of the evening.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you, guys.
Good night.
Good night.